We're coming up here.
What's that?
We're live.
Go for it.
Good.
All right, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Sorry for the delay. I'll go ahead and call this Monday, April the 3rd. Public meeting of the Board of Garrett County Commissioners to order. If everyone would please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance, and then Commissioner Titchnell will lead us in the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you all bow for the fourth prayer, please. Precious and loving heavenly Father, Lord, we just come to you today thanking you for the many blessings that you give each and every one of us. We thank you for each and every person that's here today. And Lord, we just ask that everything we say and do here today will be pleasing to you. And Lord, we again just praise you and glorify you, and we do all this in thy precious holy name. Amen. Please, sit. Mr. Knoll, any additions, corrections, or changes to public meeting agenda?
Yes, sir, we have one. Our original agenda had an item for recognizing habitat for humanity. That is going to be rescheduled. Other than that, there's no other additions or corrections.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve the public meeting agenda as amended?
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Agenda approved by mutual consent. Everybody got a copy of the minutes in advance of the meeting? Are there any questions or changes to the minutes? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Minutes are approved by mutual consent. We have two proclamations to start the meeting today. The first one, which we have several individuals here for, which we appreciate, is for Child Abuse Prevention Month, proclamation, April 2023. So I'll go ahead and read the proclamation, and then all the blue shirts can come up and join us up here, and we'll get a picture, and then if anybody wants to say anything, certainly feel free to do so. So the Child Abuse Prevention Month, April 2023, whereas child abuse and neglect is a complex and ongoing problem in our society affecting many children in Garrett County, and whereas every child is entitled to be loved, cared for, nurtured, feel secure, and be free from verbal, sexual, emotional, and physical abuse and neglect, and whereas Garrett County has dedicated individuals and organizations who work daily to counter the problem of child maltreatment and to help parents obtain the assistance they need, and whereas due to the combined efforts of the Garrett County Department of Social Services, the State's Attorney's Office, Maryland State Police, Garrett County Sheriff's Department, Garrett County Board of Education, and the Garrett County Health Department, a memorandum of understanding has been signed committing to the pursuit of a local child advocacy center, whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships among families, social service agencies, schools, religious and civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Now therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners of Garrett County, do hereby proclaim April 2023 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Garrett County and call upon all citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to prevent child abuse, thereby strengthening the communities in which we live. And witness whereof, we, the Board of County Commissioners of Garrett County, have hereunto set our hands and caused the seal of Garrett County to be affixed here to this document the third day of April in the year of our Lord 2023, signed by Commissioner Savage, Titchnell, and myself. And if you all would join us up front and get the proclamation. Yeah, come on up. Who wants the proclamation?
That would be either Heather or Tamara.
All right, we'll give that to you. So you're giving the speech?
No, it's Emma.
All right, well, we'll get our picture taken, and then Tamara, it's all yours.
Three, two, one. Happy New Year.
Everybody get them?
Yes, I'll just say on behalf of everyone up here and our partners, and the long list you read on that proclamation, just want to thank the community. It might be our jobs by default, but it takes the community to really pay attention and to reach out and let us know when something's going on. So thanks to the entire community for their effort in keeping Garrett County's children safe.
Thank you, guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And if you guys want to come in and fill in now, there's some seats. You don't even have to sit all the way up front then. Our second proclamation is for Arbor Day. Melissa and some other members of the Forestry Board are here, if you guys want to come up. And I'll go ahead and read the proclamation, and then I'll turn it over to you guys. This proclamation for Arbor Day on April 5th, 2023, whereas Garrett County is extremely proud of its vast array of cherished natural resources, the commemoration of Arbor Day serves as a fitting tribute to our mighty trees and other treasures, and whereas Garrett County's forests constitute one of our most valuable renewable and recyclable resources, providing timber for industry, habitat for wildlife, watershed protection, clean air, improved water quality, and recreational use, and whereas Garrett County is pleased to recognize the many conservation organizations and other concerned citizens who have joined with the Maryland Department of Natural Resources Forest Service to wisely plant trees for the future, now therefore, we, the Board of Garrett County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim April 5th, 2023, as Arbor Day in Garrett County, and do commend this observance to all of our citizens, signed by Commissioner Savage, Titchnell, and myself. And whoever wants to speak?
All right, so every year for Arbor Day, the Maryland Forest Service and the Forester Boards throughout the state sponsor an Arbor Day poster contest for 5th graders, and the Garrett County Board offers local prizes, so we want to recognize those winning posters from Garrett County today. We had 36 entries this year, which is great. We had four schools, entries from four different schools in the county, so we're really happy with the participation. But we'd like to recognize, all three of our winners this year are from Accident Elementary. So Emma Seacrest. This is...
Come on up, Emma.
This is Emma's first place poster. She got first place in the county. Her poster also advanced to the state contest, where she got third place in the state. So we're going to be planting some trees at Emma's school this spring. Hold your poster for the picture. And Emma gets an award of $75 from the Forestry Board. Second place is Coden Alvarado. Did I pronounce that right? Okay. This is Coden's poster. Pass it down. And Coden gets an award of $50 from the Forestry Board. And our third place for the county is Elodie Morrell. So Elodie gets an award of $25 from the Forestry Board. And also for Arbor Day, thanks in part to the county commissioners for helping provide us with some funding every year. We give out tree seedlings to 3rd grade students. This year, it's sugar maple. So if anybody here in the audience would like a seedling to take with them, once we leave, maybe if you just raise your hand, we can hand you a sugar maple seedling for Arbor Day.
All right.
Can I get somebody to take a picture with that thing? Please.
Call her.
Thank you.
Everybody got them? Everybody got them? All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you, sure.
And if anybody wants a sugar maple, raise your hand. Thank you, guys. You know she gave them all to me. Thank you, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I may need this to defend myself.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you very much. All right, we'll move right along. The next item on the agenda is Resolution of Approval and Execution for the 2023 Garrett County Tax Sale. This resolution number is 2023-3, a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Garrett County, Maryland, a body politic and corporate and governing body of Garrett County, Maryland, for the purpose of setting the date and time of the tax sale under 14-808 of the Tax Property Article of the Antited Code of Maryland. The online auction, this is for the online auction. Registration opens May 1st and closes on May the 19th. Tax sale bidding begins on May 22nd and ends on May 26th, and payments are due Friday, May 26th by 4:00 p.m. Any questions on Resolution Number 2023-3? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 2023-3? We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Question or motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, we have several bid items. Mr. Knoll, what do you have for us?
Yes, sir, we have three bids. Our first bid is bid number 230316, Precast Concrete Box Culvert. There was one bid received from Concrete Pipe and Precast in the amount of $63,684. This is for a culvert replacement on Bethlehem Road, and this project is within budget.
Questions? We'll take all these as a slate, but one at a time, we'll take questions. Are there any questions on the Precast Culvert? Next.
Our second is bid number 230302, purchase and installation of ceramic tile in the courthouse. Again, one bid was received from Success Floor Covering in the amount of $74,920.98. This actual bid had two options with it, and we're recommending to reject option two. We will go within, we will go with option one, again, which is $74,920.98. This is for both floors of the courthouse, this orange tile out here, reddish tile, and it is, project is within budget.
Questions on the tile? Next.
And our final bid is bid number 230309, the Friendsville Wastewater Treatment Plant Roof and Gutter Replacement. We had two bids were received, rough roofing and sheet metal in the amount of $39,030, and Daystar Builders in the amount of $39,945. The recommendation is to award it to the parent low bidder, rough roofing, it's easier to say, in the amount of $39,030.
Questions on the wastewater treatment roof and gutter replacement? This was in budget?
I'm sorry, yes, this was in budget.
Any other questions on any three of the bids? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendations from the Purchasing Department on bid number 23-0316 on the concrete box and culvert, bid number 23-0302 for the installation of ceramic tile, and bid number 23-0309 for the roof at the Friendsville Water Treatment Plant.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion to approve the recommendations by the Purchasing Department that were just outlined, and we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Question or motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is to, is the Garrett County Transportation Priority Letter. For those of you that tuned in last meeting or were in-house, this is the public hearing that we had, that the Planning Department outlined the transportation priorities. Two-week comment period on that public hearing. We received no comments, is that correct?
Correct.
So with that being said, we will entertain a motion to accept that transportation priority. Just real quick, for the people in-house or tuning in that may not have seen that, those projects summarized are the US 219 North Extension to the Pennsylvania State Line, pedestrian and bicycle concept plan connecting towns along Maryland 135, which would be Lachlan, Mountain Lake, and Oakland, the US 219 safety improvement upgrade near Trader's Landing, Oakland to Harrington Manor, build out of a trail or concept plan, US 219 Oakland Bypass updated, US 219 from Mossa Road to Glendale Road, concept plan for bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure, Grantsville Sidewalk Extension along US Route 40 to River Road, Maryland 135 to Sand Flat Road to Maryland 219 intersection improvements, Oakland North-South Bicycle and Pedestrian Connection Concept Plan, Garrett County Transit Operating and Capital Funding, Grantsville Route 669 Sidewalk Expansion, Friendsville Sidewalk Expansion on First Street, Modernized Traffic Controls at US 219 Intersections at Alder Street and Oak Street in Oakland, Accident Town Trail Connection Concept Plan, Garrett County Strategic Highway Safety Plan, and Trail Design and Engineering Funds for Trails Connecting Friendsville to the Pennsylvania Line. Any questions by the commissioners on that? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the Garrett County Transportation Priority Letter 2023?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I want to thank everyone that had some work done on that, so thank you very much for your time, and I know all the towns were engaged with that, lots of stakeholder groups, so it was thoroughly vetted, and Sierra Wigfield led the way on that, and we appreciate it, so thank you. All right, just a couple of announcements. Next meeting is Tuesday, April the 18th, and as most of you know, we are in the budget cycle right now. We will have three budget presentations this evening, that being the Health Department, the Sheriff's Department, and the Board of Education. Next meeting on Tuesday, April the 18th, the budget presentations will be Garrett College and the Garrett County Chamber of Commerce. We will go to a time of public question and comment in just a second, but I want just a procedural point of order. Once the public meeting is adjourned and we go to the budget presentations, there will not be any public comment or questions during the budget presentations to the presenting agencies unless they come from the commissioners. If you have questions or comments about the budget presentations for the three entities that are presenting tonight, the Board of Education will have their own budget hearing where you are free to comment and participate in that budget hearing, and the Health Department and the Sheriff's Department are part of our comprehensive budget. We will have a separate budget hearing on that, where you can ask as many questions as you like directly about that as well. But for tonight, we will go to public comment and question in just a second. Once that is concluded, we will adjourn the public meeting and move into the budget presentations, at which time there will not be any public question or comment. So having said all of that, is there any, are there any questions or comments for the commissioners at this time? Yes, ma'am?
I wanted to make a public comment.
What we would ask is that you come up to the front and state your name for the people watching at home and for the record, and then go ahead and make your comment. So, Commissioner Savage.
Okay, now, do I have three minutes?
Yep, we'll give you, we'll give you three minutes.
Anyway, okay. Hi, my name is Linda Bradley, and I'm a resident of McKinney. I understand that the county commissioners have no jurisdiction over the school board. However, they do need to be aware of the ramifications for all of the county, especially how the Board of Education plans and decisions will affect economic development, et cetera. At many board meetings, I have spoken about the detrimental effects of closing Swan Meadow. Today, I want to summarize some points from the listening session at Northern Middle School on March 30th. At that meeting, I was surprised to hear that options for the northern part of the county include a consolidated school called Northern Elementary to take place, to take the place of Accident and Friendsville after they are closed. I had no idea that the plans to close more community schools were progressing this quickly in addition to Route 40 and Swan Meadow this year. So apparently Accident and Friendsville are also being considered for closing, and I'm not sure when that plan would take place. If the proposed new school already has a name, Northern Elementary School, it appears that this decision has already been made. Are parents and residents of Accident and Friendsville aware of this plan? At that meeting, I also had the privilege to talk to some students from both Northern and Southern high schools. From them and from the speakers, I learned about the existence and importance of the agricultural pathway and the devastating effect that consolidation will have on these students. Their FFA clubs are the largest student clubs in both high schools. They train students for a variety of important future careers, including crop farming, animal husbandry, business management, welding, and soil science, et cetera. Contrary to sports in which many students do excel and gain valuable life experience, the agriculture program is introducing and preparing students for lifelong careers. The State, the Farm Bureau Board of Directors has contacted Mike Giacomo with the Governor's Workforce Development Board. He is charged with implementing the blueprint into the CTE programs at the state level. He said that no school system should be removing any agriculture education resources for the blueprint, and in fact, they should be looking at ways to expand. So the school consolidation here will decrease the space allowed for the classes, and the number of students in those classes will increase, making their projects more difficult to complete, and not even allowing enough space for the projected number of participants. How many other residents and students and parents and teachers were unaware of the impact of the school consolidations on this program, the agriculture program? How many other programs are in danger of being wiped out or severely hampered? Has anyone considered the impact on each and every program or facet of our schools? Shouldn't we reevaluate the emphasis that we place on every program and determine which ones are the most important to support and expand? Shouldn't we compare the costs associated with each program, for instance, turf for our sports fields as opposed to resources and space for academic programs? Decision makers in this county need to be aware of the impact of all of these details on the school consolidation plans. At the very least, these monumental decisions that will affect hundreds of students and families and economically the county as a whole should be delayed until a new school superintendent is hired. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else? Comments, questions? Mr. Record?
My name's Robert Record. I'm the mayor of the town of Kitts Miller. I'm here just to speak on behalf of a community that had, that lost its school. First of all, we all understand that this decision don't lie with the commissioners. Just a few of the, I just wanted to hit on a few main things that we found out what happened when we lost our school. Communication, communication's big, and we lost a lot of communication in our town when we lost our school. We did a lot of our communicating through the school, so we ended, we have to come up with different ways to take care of that. Child care is another thing. A lot of people in our town, you know, with the school being there, it was easy for them to be able to go get a job and work, but with the school not being there, they got to make different arrangements and things like that. And the biggest thing that we had was, or the biggest issue that we have now is attracting new residents to our community because we don't have a school there. People move into the community, they want their school to be close. Right now, we have 30 to 45 minute transportation times to the new school, or to the schools over here in Oakland. That's basically, that's basically the three main things I wanted to touch on, just so that, I know the, I know the transportation, child care and stuff, the stuff that the commissioners are looking at all the time, and I think this was part of what happened with us down there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mayor Schlossnag?
Yes, sir. Thank you for your time, gentlemen. We also have the mayor of Friendsville here in Garrett County. We have several mayors here with us today. Thank you for your time. I know it's a difficult decision, what you guys are going through, what the Board of Ed is going through, we do that in our municipalities, but our new governor has said no one is left behind. And the big thing is for Friendsville, as you heard Mayor Record say, what Kitts Miller went through. Friendsville has a daycare, a tiny toss daycare at the elementary school. We have the Head Start Center at the elementary school. 10 years ago, we were down to 100 students in the school. Yes, that was very low. We're up to 138, 140. So as the numbers increase, we're concerned if we can get some additional housing, which our new Secretary of Housing, Secretary Day, has met with Dwayne Yona recently and said, hey, we'd like to bring some more housing into Friendsville. We're looking to put some more housing development in. If we do, the children will be going to school in Friendsville, hopefully. Currently, some of those children are riding on a bus for over an hour and a half, close to two hours. So I know for all of our Board of Ed members, I ask any of you to please come down and get on the bus at 6:30 in the morning, 6:15 in the morning, and see what these children are going through. We're very proud to be in an agricultural community. It's very difficult to have the children get up early to do their chores, get breakfast, and then get on the bus and go to school. Two weeks ago, here I am, I have a 4th grade students come into the town hall for the If I Were Mayor Contest we do for the Maryland Newsweek. Kids are taking a tour of the town hall, and we're all excited about what we're doing and things, and here I have one little 4th grader. She looks at me and says, I want to ask you a question. What can you do to save my, our school? I'm in the 4th grade, and my little brother's in the 1st grade. And she said, he gets real sick, and my mommy, and I heard my mom and dad talking, and then she said, my daddy said, well, we'll probably have to move over to Pennsylvania because we only have one vehicle right now. My dad works in my mom's town, and coming clear all the way from Friendsville all the way to Accident, it's hardship just to get to Friendsville. But she said, so we might have to move. Can you help us so we don't have to move? You know, I have to turn my back on that poor child because I'm getting emotional. You know, I don't care who you are, it's very difficult when the children are talking about that. I said, you let that up to us adults. Money's tight. We can go to, back to this governor. We did that with Governor O'Malley. They helped us out back in 2012. They gave us money to help to save some of our schools, to unite us. We need to work together. We're in this together, whether it's the commissioners, the Board of Ed, municipalities. What do we need to do? You know, hopefully we don't have to raise taxes, but what, where can we cut? Just a few, few dollars here and there. Our central office, we're renting that space from the bank. Well, if we're reusing Dennis Road School, can we try to move folks over into Dennis Road School so we don't have to cut thousands of dollars where we can? Friendsville, we asked four or five years ago, we could like to put solar panels on. They'll help to cut the electrical expense. Electric's very expensive in that school, because the school is very good shape overall. Yeah, needs walls put in, it needs some things done, but we continue to close schools, no one is going to want to move to Garrett County. Housing is our big thing, job creation, that's wonderful, we're bringing some new jobs Job creation, that's wonderful, we're bringing some new jobs in. If we don't have a school close by, we're not gonna have young families moving in here because why would you want to move to a school, to a county where the, the school is an hour and a half to two hours away? So, I just employ you to please let's, let's work together. I know you have to go a maintenance of effort from the state law, but if, if we can work together to, for some stipulations that we have to work together and have a steering committee, bring people to the table, letting us know what's gonna happen. We need to help these children out. It's about them. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you, Spencer. Anyone else? Mayor of Mountain Lake Park.
I'm Don Sensel and I am the mayor of Mountain Lake Park. Kind of a whole lot of mayors speaking today, but just a few things, you know, two days ago, I had no intention of being here, and then somebody asked me to come, and I thought, well, if I go, what am I gonna talk about? You know, my, my town, there used to be a Mountain Lake Park Elementary School before I was born. It's been gone a long time, but I kinda have yoke blades and, and right now brought to serve my town. But I got to thinking about particularly Swan Meadow, and I just wanted to share a couple of ideas. I'm certainly not here to criticize anybody to be an antagonist, particularly my town, my council, and our relationship with these county commissioners is excellent. We work together on so many things. I know a lot of, I know all the board members from the Board of Education, friends of mine, and, and I'm not criticizing. Unfortunately, this is sort of a data-driven situation. We have, and it, and it causes a situation where every decision is gonna be the wrong one or the difficult. There's no winners. But as much as we would like for money to not be at the bottom of just about everything we finally decide, the fact of the matter is, it's a huge component. And we have falling school populations, we all know that. With the skull, falling school populations, we also lose money from state and federal sources for education. One thing I thought about though, in the case of Swan Meadow, when Kitsmiller School closed, when Bloomington School closed, as difficult as that was for the, those communities, and Robbie shared some that his town experienced, most of those kids ended up coming to another school within the county. The problem with Swan Meadow, and I spoke to a retired teacher, just recently retired teacher from that school, there are likely thirty-five children, roughly thirty-five children, who will not be continuing their education in the public school system. They're all members of the Amish community. And so, you know, the closure of Swan Meadow, that's a particularly big hit when it comes to the finances of it all. I, I just did a little bit of research this morning and I saw that in Maryland, school systems receive seventeen thousand four hundred ninety-three dollars per student. There's a thousand four hundred eighty-two of that from the federal government, twelve thousand two twenty-three from the state, and the local contribution is three thousand seven hundred and three. Now, if you back out the county amount, thirty-seven oh three, you end up with thirteen thousand seven hundred ninety dollars. That number times thirty-five students is just shy of a half million dollars that the county potentially stands to lose. And of course, also in the Amish community, of course, you all know this, I don't need to tell you, the history of the school was pretty remarkable, and there are Amish families who have literally moved here because they knew they had such a great school. And they have not just moved here, but families have stayed here because they have a really good school for the Amish kids. And so I, I fear, and of course, as families leave, we lose a whole lot more economically than just school money. You know, they, they're no longer here paying their taxes, they're no longer here spending their money in our stores and in our businesses. So, that's just something, and again, I may not be telling these board members anything they haven't already calculated and thought about, but that was just one thing that I thought particularly with Swan Meadow, that's a different kind of an issue maybe than we might have with some of the other schools. And I certainly appreciate Mayor Schlossnagle's comments about his situation. And I was just about crying there along with you, Spence, but I hadn't thought of a lot of those things. So, thank you very much for this opportunity.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, sir. Former Senator.
Chairman, Commissioners, my name is John Van Backus, and I was actually here for the forestry board meeting, and when I looked at the agenda, something that I want to make a few comments on. First of all, I concur with the comments that have been made by the previous mayors and previous speakers. I went through this, or out when I was representing Garrett and Allegheny County, we went through this in the mid nineteen eighties, and it's hard to believe, forty years later, you know, I'm here, speaking very briefly, on what it means because there were, I don't know for sure, but I believe there were about three or four high schools closed, a number of elementary schools, and a number of middle schools. Those communities have never recovered, primarily along Georgia's Creek, out in eastern Allegheny County. And like the fire departments and churches and so forth, these are community, these are community centers. And I, I have, I have two grandchildren coincidentally in Friendsville. I have visited that school on a regular basis. I know the school, they're, one's in kindergarten and one is in pre-kindergarten, so I'm very concerned about it. But I also know, and as the mayors have said, we understand the situation that everybody's in. And we went through this and we were able to get a little bit of money here and there, but ultimately, the commissioners have to come up with the money because as you well know, the Board of Education doesn't have taxing authority. And believe me, if I were in your shoes, I, I wouldn't have an answer. But I'm just saying, if there is any way, any way, that priorities can be changed because this will not only affect the communities, it will affect Garrett County. And Garrett County, I, I just saw in the paper the other day, its population has remained pretty steady. Okay, we've got a few losses in communities, but it's remained pretty steady. I can guarantee you, the numbers will go down dramatically. So I don't have many answers. I'm asking the community itself and the commissioners to say, how important is education to you? I'm also an educator of thirty-seven years, and I know how important education is. I'm a first-generation college-educated person, and I guarantee you, Garrett County will continue a cycle going downhill. I, I can't emphasize enough what this will mean. You have no idea. I know the board members have very difficult decisions to make. I know everybody does, and like everybody here, nobody's here to cast any blame or anything else. But please, remember these words. Forty years ago, as a senator, we had to deal with this, and we were able to get a little bit of money, but our population was dramatically increased by decreasing, and we lost ten thousand jobs. I want to remind people here who are a lot younger than I am, in the early nineteen eighties, Allegheny County lost ten thousand jobs. We had never recovered from that. And I, I just pray that this isn't the situation here. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn the public meeting?
Oh, no.
All right, the meeting is officially adjourned. We will now transition into the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget presentations. First on the docket is the Health Department, and Bob, I will turn it over to you.
Sitting here.
We'll bring you up.
Here?
Yep, right inside Commissioner Sad. One deck is the Sheriff's Department.
See if this is, is this loaded on here, Kevin?
Nope, I have it here.
Okay. I want to thank everybody for the opportunity to be here, and this is, it's very interesting and enlightening to hear the, the presentations, and I, I agree, it's a very hard decision to make, decisions as, as we're moving forward, and that comes from the graduate of Bruce High School, which is no longer there. And I have with me Jennifer Hare, who I believe was a graduate of
Westmar.
Westmar High School, which
Which is no longer there.
Jennifer is our, our administrator, and so she's here to answer the really hard questions, so I'll kinda give the, the global. I would let everybody know that this is Public Health Week, National Public Health Week. And when I looked at your docket of who's presenting, I can say that, you know, that the Sheriff's Department contributes to public health, the Board of Education contributes to public health. We like to think that we contribute to education and that we also are involved with public safety, so we're all here, you know, as, as a group. And so if you'd go ahead and like to move that up, the, the one thing I do see, Scott back there in the back, and when we present our budgets, it's kinda like somebody trying to paint a merry-go-round when the horses are going up and down. Very, very difficult to do. And so this is a point in time, and we're, we're trying to do that. So there's the mission of the Garrett County Health Department, to promote, protect, and improve the health of citizens and visitors of Garrett County. And our vision of Garrett County is a healthier place to live, work, and play. We're accredited by the Public Health Accreditation Board. There are about three hundred local health departments out of three thousand in, in the country who are accredited, and there's thirteen now in Maryland. And would like to say, some of those, those counties that are much wealthier, when they got their accreditation several years after us, they thought that it was a big deal and it was a hard thing to do, and we, we were able to get that. And so I, I think that's kinda testimony to the work we do, but I'm gonna try to keep it kinda simple. I only have a few slides here, so if you'd like to go ahead, Kevin. So here's some basic facts with the Garrett County Health Department. So we have eighty-two different program areas, and that's grants at this time. So there's other areas that we have that are fee-for-service, and then throughout the year, that number will go up and down as far as the number of grants that we have. We have a hundred and forty, fifty-four full-time equivalent staff. People may think, wow, that's a lot for the Health Department, and it is, but over half of them are in, are in our fee-for-service programs, in our healthy families, nurse home visiting program, in our dental clinic, in our behavioral health clinics, and in our home health. And so those are providing direct care, and so that's a large majority of, or it's about half of our staff. And then we have the two facilities, of course, the one that's owned by the county in, in Oakland, and then in Grantsville, we rent off of Garrett County Community Action. There's a list of the programs that are gonna, that we're requesting funding for, the ones that have the little stars or what, those are, are areas that are required to be funded by the state with, state core funding, and there has to be match in order to get that, the funds that the state provides, we have to provide those services. But we do go across all of these different areas that are listed there. The one that's kinda the outlier is Appalachian Crossroads, to be honest with you. I'm not even sure how that works. It's just a pass, so you give us the money, we give it to them, and, and that's, that's what happens. If you'd like to go to the next slide, please, and then go ahead and flip over to that. So the, what I wanna, I'm gonna front-end load this and let you know that when we get to the end, we're, we're not asking for any more funding this year than we'd have in the past. But I do wanna call out a couple of different, you know, just points to make along the way. So what I call, what I call, and I don't know if it's, if it's a, if it's a good budgeting term or not, but I say that we have uncontrolled salary increases this year, and most, most people are aware that the Health Department is a county agency, but we are in the state payroll system. We're the only agency that's like that, it's kind of a hybrid, our local health departments. And so when the state passes increases, then we have to take those on. And, and so over the last few years, there have been quite a few pay increases for state employees, and that's been passed on to us. Sometimes those come along, I know Rodney is with us, and he went through some years where the state increased funding and, or increased state salary cost, and they did not give one cent, or they gave very few dollars to pass along because of all of our local staff. But here's, here's what the increases were, so there's a, a four-point-five percent COLA that went into effect on November first, so that's being annualized, so there's, so next year's four hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars more than last year for our, our salaries for staff. There's two percent length of service COLA that was just announced. That was announced since we submitted the budget to, to all of you. And that's actually a good thing because there were a lot of years where state employees and, and Health Department employees received absolutely no cost of living increase for year, year after year after year, and then what happens is, they've done this length of service because what, what in fact that did was, it meant that a new employee could come in and somebody else could be employed there for, you know, five or seven or eight years, and everybody would be on the same level. So employees that have over five years length of service will get a two percent cost of living increase. And then there were some step increases that are impacted in fiscal year twenty-four. So Kevin, you wanna do the next? So the state budget as submitted includes increases in funding to assist in covering most of those increases, but the total amount allocated to Health, Garrett County Health Department as well as other health departments really hasn't been disclosed at this time. And so, you know, we're kind of shooting in the dark, we're hoping that there's not gonna be any surprises there, but those are, those are costs of, again, that we can't control, but most of that, when we put this budget together, Jennifer made some assumptions that, based on good faith and what the state is telling us, that most of that is going to be covered, those cost of living increases, but not all of them. If you'd like to go to the next. One of the things that, the reason why we are able to keep our budgeting flat-funded this year is that our IT staff, remember, last year when we were here, we were, we had, the state had a, a huge data breach, and we were, everybody was working off laptops and personal laptops and everything else because the, the entire system for MBH crashed. As part of that, health departments were given the option of moving their staff into what's called the Office of Enterprise Technology as part of Maryland Department of Health. We were one of, I think, seven counties that opted to do that, and honest to goodness, I can't understand why other counties would not do that, but that allowed, the state took over the funding for our IT staff, they're still in our building, they told us they're gonna still be in our building, the service you could not, you, no one could tell that the service has changed at all. And so that's really a three hundred and thirty thousand dollar gift really to the county, but not all, not all counties took advantage of that. There were some counties that, that decided they would rather be part of the do-it system and, and take on those extra costs within their local budget. Next, Kevin? So a couple other points to be made, local health departments can't increase their fees unilaterally, the fees are based on state medical assistance rates, and so when, when, when those increases go up, especially for staff, if a staff costs more than in those fee-for-service programs costs more than in those fee-for-service programs, we can't just say, well, we're going to pass that along to our consumers because the, the, uh, the state controls that with the medical assistance rate. We do have, we're fortunate, uh, we received, uh, what's called a Public Health Infrastructure Grant, uh, in fiscal year 23, and they're letting us roll that forward into 2024, so we do have some extra staff in there that have been hired, um, and, uh, so that, that is Public Health Emergency Planner, our Public Health Emergency Planner is getting close to retirement age, uh, he has a great deal of institutional knowledge, and we need to get somebody in, in there to take his place, so we, we, we're taking advantage of that. Um, I guess now it's 15 months of, of, uh, time that we'll have a Public Health Emergency Planner, uh, to work alongside, uh, so that when that retirement occurs, then we, then we'll be in good shape. We also, uh, uh, looked at a grant writer, uh, with that, with those funds, that, so that's fully, uh, supported by that, uh, that grant, and we're hoping that that grant writer will be self-supporting after, after a year, and then we also administrative support, we have, uh, a couple, uh, key positions in administration where people have a lot of year service, close to over 30-year service, and when that person retires, once again, it's that institutional knowledge, and so we, we feel that we want to take advantage of that opportunity to have, um, to get our staff ready. Um, so we're hopeful that we'll be able to make up, uh, some of the other differences that, that we're going to see through, uh, efficiencies and grant development, so this is what I said, I front-end loaded it, last year in fiscal year 23, we asked for this exact amount, and that's what you were, you funded us at, uh, two, uh, $2,436,815, so it's the exact same amount. If you'd like to go to the next slide, Kevin? Thank you. So this is our, this is our budget, and just hit it again, okay, and just, just to show you where those are, and then one more time, Kevin. Um, okay, so these are the different, we could break this, this pie chart down into 82 or 100, when we put all the fee-for-service in there, we could have 100 different slices in there, but we decided not to, make it a little too complicated. So the state corps is what is it, at, uh, the, uh, noon to 1:30 time, and that's 9% of our, of, of our budget. Um, then what's being, what you see there is 15% is what is in that county corps. Uh, if you look at those others, there's state grants, uh, which is the 19%, uh, the dark green is the, uh, is the federal and foundation grants, and then the, uh, fee-for-service is that kind of teal color, uh, I believe that's the right color, color impaired maybe, um, but, uh, that's 28%. What I'd like to point out is if you, if you went back and you looked in your archives and saw what, where it was last year, there's a little less money overall in this total budget that's being presented, the proportion that is fee-for-service has gotten larger, uh, and also, I would say the percentage, actually, we have a little higher percentage for that county corps, even though, um, it's, uh, the same amount, the percentage has gone up a little bit, and that's because of all the, you know, the COVID dollars that went away, and, and so, uh, there, some of these other areas have really shrunk as far as the funding. Um, so I wanted to let you know what, that, so what we're looking at is a 15% from the county. Next slide, please. Uh, so again, the Health Department is heavily funded, or, uh, heavily influenced by fee-for-service programs, um, you know, they can go up and down, we can have a good year, and when we have a good year, we took, like to turn money back into the county, we have, because we run that like a business. If, if we have a bad year, you know, then it can be tough, um, and so, and the budget changes constantly, that's what I, my reference to the merry-go-round that goes up and down. Um, in most years, I, uh, nearly all years, we, although we've had, had a couple slim years, we've been able to return funds to the county rather than, um, rather than spending them all out, and again, that's because we're in the unique situation where we have, we're highly influenced by the fee-for-service dollars. Uh, if we didn't have those fee-for-service dollars, we, I'm sure we, we'd be in a different situation. So actually, in, uh, the 2022 accounts have closed, so that would have been what was up through last, um, July, the state takes a lot of time to reconcile those dollars, but we believe that that number, 915,429, is what's going to be returned from 2022, so even though we're asking for $2,436,000, we're giving back 1, 1.5 million, so, uh, or we're giving back that nine, uh, 900,000, so it's, uh, really just an, an impact of 1.5 million. I hope you understand that, it's a little different than probably other, the other budgets you're going to hear about here. I see some smirk back in there, smiling about that. You need to start charging fees. Any questions?
Questions for Bob? I don't think so. Thanks, Bob, appreciate it.
Okay, and I, and I want to thank Jennifer again, because she's the one that does the heavy lifting here.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Garrett County Sheriff's Department. Gentlemen, it's all yours.
So first off, I'd like to just introduce myself, my name is Grayson Myers, I'm currently serving as a sheriff of Garrett County. Um, with me, standing beside me, is my right-hand man, he keeps everything together for me, and that's Major Colt Ruby. Um, I'm pleased to have kind of announced, um, that we worked real hard on this budget, I will go on record and say this is the first time me and him have prepared a budget, so take it easy on us, but we try to be, uh, as fiscally responsible as possible, and, um, cut costs everywhere. Um, as you guys know, I'm associated with secret, public safety in general, and especially law enforcement, is going through some challenging times, and, um, we're navigating through those to the best of our ability. With that said, there were some mandates that came out that we're dealing with to, um, support financially, and so far, it's going pretty good, we're getting most of it, um, funded through grants and stuff, and I hope that continues, and I'll kind of highlight some of that. My budget's not going to be real long, because we don't have any major increases. Basically, from 2023 to 2024, we're just increasing $15,335, which I'm pretty proud of. Um, on the Sheriff's Office side of things, the biggest thing that we brought into play is a body camera, I brought one up for you guys to see, um, that's a mandate that came out from the state, and it doesn't have to be in place till 2025. When me and Colt took office, we decided, um, let's not wait till 2025, let's get them on our officers now, let's work out the problems, let's figure them out, and get them on, and we went with Motorola Company, those body cameras cost us about $28,000 initially, we were able to get that paid for through the PAC grant, I hope that continues, we're reapplying for that this year, um, to pay for the service fee. The service fee on those is about $18,000 for our department, um, but all of our officers are wearing them, um, we love them, it, it builds the transparency with law enforcement, and I think it's going to help a lot of this stuff that's going on in our country, and we, we love having them, and I think in time, you give our officers some time, they're going to really like them as well. Um, so just wanted to kind of show you those. Um, something that I added to our budget that was new is with these cameras, um, it throws in, it throws in the equation of your personal cellphone, right now, our office does not have cellphones, so I added to get each of our officer a business cellphone, which is going to cost about $24,000. That's really important, because we can run programs, uh, and on an app off this cellphone, um, and I don't want them running on our personal phones, because then our personal phones would be subject to subpoena for court purposes. So, um, it's going to be a pain, I know carrying two cellphones is rough, but I think it's important to utilize these cameras to the best of ability, I want the guys to utilize them that way, so I am asking that you guys fund, um, cellphones, which we had when I first started this department 17 years ago. Um, another thing I noticed, um, that I asked for is Class A uniforms, it was very unfortunate how we realized that, um, we had a problem here, but it was with the passing of Deputy McGellar, who was killed in that tragic car accident in December, um, we quickly realized when we planned for a funeral, that we did not have official Class A dress attire uniforms, um, and I don't want anybody to ever be put in that situation again, so I am asking to be funded for Class A uniforms in this budget. Um, that's a uniform we wear, uh, for funerals, any type of more formal business settings that we're in, it's just a different style of uniform, they are expensive, um, the increase of uniforms is probably going to be about $40,000 to outfit a department. Um, just still on the Sheriff's Office side, um, the only other major expense we're asking for is to be funded for a new police K-9, that is due to the July 1 marijuana law changing. Right now, we have two dogs in our department, one of them is still certified to alert to marijuana. With the law changing, um, we're going to have to retire that dog, we've already had that dog, we just went ahead and retired the dog now, and we're asking to be funded for a new drug detection dog. Oh, I think it's important with the increase in drugs in this county, um, that we have two dogs working different hours, I don't know if you guys have been following our social media, but we're really taking a strong presence on the drug side of things, and I think we're doing an excellent job right now, so. Um, the detention center, detention center was a big increase to my budget as a whole, that was majorly due to the M A T program, uh, for those of you who don't know, um, in January, we had to have in place a medically assisted treatment program. Everybody that comes in the door now, we have to offer morphine, buprenorphine, or methadone to them, um, they can, they can take it, they can deny it, um, it doesn't matter to us other than we have to offer it. Um, so far, the program's running very successfully, um, however, it was a major increase to the budget. Um, last year, it cost us about $257,000 to, um, implement that program in our detention center, and I had to put it in this budget, because I can't reapply for that grant till July, and I don't know if I'll get funded for it. Now, odds are, I have a feeling we'll get funded for it, um, but it's got to be in this budget, so you will see an increase when you look at our budget on the sheriff, on the detention center side, but that could go away if we get funded for it again in, um, in July for the M A T program.
Do you have to offer methadone to non-drug offender, to every inmate?
Every individual that comes in the door. Um, so that leads me to, I am asking, I'm not asking for any bodies on the Sheriff's Office side, I was able to come in, reevaluate my manpower, and realize I think we're fine staffing on the Sheriff's Office side, I am asking position in the detention center side, because I see a possibility of having transport issues in case somebody wants methadone, and we do have to start transporting them down to the methadone clinic in Laval, trying to get out ahead of it, we haven't had anybody ask for it yet, but I'm sure it's coming, and, um, that poses some transportation issues to get them down there, so I would ask to be funded for a correctional officer position, which is costing with salary and fringe about $75,000. Um, other than that, that's the only position I'm asking for. Um, our food is obviously increasing detention center, we've raised that up to account for that, that's something we can't do anything about, I know you guys have been to the grocery stores with your own budgets, the same thing down there. Um, inmates are costing us about $45 a day to house, so we did start a pre-trial release program, um, it's new, it's, uh, it's something that every single department in the state other than us in Charles County had, um, we're weeding through it right now, we have five, five people on pre-trial release, we're seeing how it goes, that's basically, um, trying to reduce our jail numbers a little bit, cut down on costs, but still have supervision on individuals that aren't, um, considered dangerous to put back in society or anything like that, and they're, so they're waiting their court date, so we're exploring that right now, to see if it's going to be a big cost saver for us. Um, I'm asking for a commercial mower, that's part of our, um, inmate work crew incentive program that we're really proud of, we end up saving the county a pile of money every year for that, uh, we're trying to get in a cycle where we're getting a mower every other year, um, so they'll see that in there. Um, any other, uh, big budget requests I'm asking for is on the 911 side of things, and that's a radio traffic server. Um, basically, this system gives us the ability to record any radio traffic and be able to play it back. Right now, we currently don't have that capability, we have the software for it, that we paid for, but we failed to get, um, the, the final software to make it happen, and that's about $126,000 budget item there. Um, it's important, we've had several crimes come up recently, um, we saw the big home invasion down in the Savage River area, where that was all called in through radio traffic tag numbers and all that kind of stuff, and it would have been nice to be able to go back and listen to that stuff, so for evidentiary purposes, um, I'm asking for that budget item, I think it's important on the 911 side, so. Outside of that, those are all my key big budget items, if you guys have any questions, feel free to run and answer them.
Question for the sheriff? You guys doing a great job, appreciate it.
You guys are easy, you let us hold up.
Colt did a great job of displaying the bar.
Thank you.
That's the best model there. All right, next up is the Garrett County Board of Education.
That's because it's going to be on the firing line there.
He can pull some more chairs, though. Thank you.
I'm Tom Woods, the president of Garrett County Board of Education. Mrs. Baker was unable to be here today, uh, but in her stead, uh, we've got Dr. Miller, uh, and also Dr. McFlay, sir, we're going to deliver our budget proposal, and I'll turn it over to them, because they know a lot more about it than anybody. It's all yours.
So thank you for allowing us to present to you all, this is always a treat every year, um, to see you all in person and, uh, provide an update on everything for your board of education, Garrett County Public Schools. Again, Mrs. Baker sends her regards, she's unfortunately had emergency surgery and is healing, um, at home, uh, but again, Dr. Miller is here to back the demo officer to, to, uh, with this presentation. Okay, so this presentation is going to be a little bit different than we've had in prior budget presentation years, we're going to provide an update on Blueprint, uh, because, you know, as, as it's being implemented, there are a lot of new formulas, new mandates, uh, new requirements for Garrett County Public Schools, and we just want to make sure that you all are aware of what we're facing, um, so Dr. Miller will be, um, aiding in that, we will touch on the 2024 operating budget, um, bring you up to speed on the facility utilization work, that is ongoing, uh, with our stakeholders, the board, and our staff, um, and then we'll also talk about the capital budget.
Okay, so Blueprint for Maryland's Future, uh, we all know that that was passed into law in, in Maryland at this time, and the overarching philosophy of this law is to transform Maryland's educational system to be competitive with the best, uh, schools in the world, and so it really does take an, an equity lens, uh, that regardless of your demographics and where you live, that you will, that we will be able to provide an education that will allow a student, any student, to be globally competitive and prepared for success in post-secondary education, work, and life. There are five major policy areas, we're going to just go over a very high-level view of these policy areas, and they include early childhood education, high-quality and diverse teachers and leaders, college and career readiness, more resources for students to be successful, and governance and accountability. What I will share with you is, is that there has been a, a lot, a significant amount of work, um, that has occurred in all five of these policy areas over the last year and a half. We do have committees for each one of these policy areas, uh, that have a leader, and within those committees, there is a broad, um, a broad makeup of stakeholder engagement within those committees, so that we're really seeking, uh, information from all, um, areas of our, our community. Um, and then we also have an executive committee, and Mr. Knoll joins us for, for that, and that, that committee kind of oversees all of the five pillar areas. So the first pillar or policy area is early childhood, this policy area really focuses on significantly expanding public, uh, full-day pre-K, uh, and that is for three-year-olds and four-year-olds, um, so, and it also includes a public, a public-private, um, delivery system, so looking at not only what the school system can do as a public provider, but also our private providers, our daycares, our local headsters, et cetera. Uh, but it is important to know that, you know, right now, we do provide four-year-old pre-K for every four-year-old in the county who wants to be in our pre-K, um, program, however, we do need to look at our three-year-old, um, program and ensure that we're offering enough slots by the time Blueprint is, uh, fully implemented in 2032, uh, to ensure that every three-year-old, uh, that is income-eligible has an opportunity to be served, um, with early intervention. This pillar also looks at ensuring that we increase the number of high-quality early childhood educators, expand supports, uh, for our young children and our families, that those supports often come in the form of our duty centers and PADI centers, um, so sometimes you'll hear those referenced, ensuring that our infants and toddlers programs are fully funded, and ultimately, to ensure that every student that comes- are fully funded, and ultimately to ensure that every student that comes to Garrett County Public Schools in kindergarten is ready for kindergarten and ready for the rigorous standards and instruction that they'll need to, to end school, college, and career-ready. So that's early childhood, high-level overview. Pillar two looks at elevating the teacher profession to a high status, to the high status that it deserves, and, and basically making it similar to other professions that have similar educational backgrounds, similar college degrees. But really looking at improving the professional practice and our professional working conditions, increasing the rigor of educational license, licensure, really focusing on recruitment and professional development, so recruitment and retention of highly qualified teachers, ensuring that there's a career ladder in place. That is one of the biggest components of pillar two, is to ensure that we have that career ladder in place and implement a more comprehensive in-service educating, educator training and professional development. College and career readiness. A lot of people, when they first see this policy area, they think high school because that's generally where we talk a lot about college and career-ready. And, and we start talking about pathways and dual enrollment and, and college and, and CTE programs and such. This pillar is really one of the largest of the five. There are more questions and more transformation that has to happen in this pillar than in all the other five, although all of them have their challenges and things that we're going to have to, to implement over the course of the next 10 years. This pillar really looks at ensuring that we are providing high-quality curriculum to students from kindergarten, pre-K really, but kindergarten all the way up through 12th grade to ensure those students are able to be performing on grade level and ultimately be college and career-ready by the end of 10th grade. And then the, another part of this pillar is, if they're not, what type of system and resources do we have in place to support students who are not on track to be CCR? So it does really hit every single grade level, ensuring that those students have high-quality resources, ensuring that there's high-quality instruction, and, and that those students are able to learn and perform on grade level. And if not, how are we supporting getting them onto grade level? Another important component is ensuring students are ready to read on grade level by the end of third grade. There's also a significant CTE component, and one of the biggest components of this pillar is ensuring that there's a post-CCR pathway. So once students demonstrate college and career-ready, that we have opportunities for those students, such as the ability to earn an associate's degree through dual enrollment, an AP path, and then high-quality CTE programs, which also includes an apprenticeship program. So there's a lot of work that is going into that. And then we also have to provide for any student who is not CCR by the end of 10th grade, an individualized plan for getting them CCR by the time they graduate. So again, a lot of work in that area. Pillar four really is focused on ensuring that the students who need additional resources to perform on grade level, right back. So it really is focused on some of our student groups that historically have been underperforming across the state and the nation. And those student groups generally include English language learners, students who are living in poverty, and students who receive special education services. Another important component of this particular pillar, you'll often hear that community schools are embedded into the Blueprint. That is true. The, the Blueprint law talks about community schools, and they use terms interchangeably. They use community schools and concentration of poverty grants schools interchangeably. A community school is defined by the Blueprint is a school that has a high concentration of poverty. So we often explain that, and we try to explain it everywhere we go, because in our county, a community school has a different definition. But for the Blueprint, it is a, it is a school that has a high concentration of poverty. We do have one community school, Blueprint Community School, going into next fiscal year, and that is the Oakley's. And then the last policy area is governance and accountability. This pillar really focuses on the development of the Blueprint Plan as a whole, the, ensuring that we have a state Blueprint Implementation Plan, a local Blueprint Implementation Plan. A lot of the requirements specific to the 75% of school funding, having to follow the student to their school, falls under this pillar. And then there's also some state responsibilities under this pillar, including the Accountability Implementation Board and the creation of expert review teams to visit schools across the state. And with that, we'll go on to the next page. This page really gives a very high-level summary of resources that any stakeholder can find on our school system website. Commissioners are certainly welcome to browse it as well. We have put in a significant amount of work with a goal of ensuring that we're getting information out to the public, trying to educate the public and our stakeholders and our staff about the Blueprint and what the requirements are. So you will find on our website infographics for every single pillar that go over the highlights of what is required. We also have a virtual Blueprint Information Series, which are small videos that explain each pillar, the, each pillar we've created those, those videos for the public. And then we also have multiple public information sessions that are also posted that the public can, can review and understand more about the Blueprint. And then we'll end with where we're at. So in March, March 15th of 2023, we submitted the first phase of the first submission for our Blueprint Implementation Plan for Garrett County Public Schools. So as I said, well, I didn't say this, I said, a lot of work went into this plan, but what I will say is that the actual template itself was 99 pages, and it was an extensive number of questions that we had to work through. And it focused on fiscal year '22, '23, and '24. So it really was taking a look at Blueprint requirements and what was required for every single pillar, and it looked back to last year, what we're currently doing now, and what we're going to be doing next year. That just went to the Accountability Implementation Board and MSDE on March 15th. We're now in the phase of review for that initial plan. We hope to get feedback by mid-April to mid-May. If any revisions are necessary, we'll be notified and we give an opportunity to make adjustments. But the goal is that the AIV will approve our plan in June. Once that happens, and actually, work is already started on the next phase, but certainly once that happens, we will be heavy into the second phase of the first submission, which is what you'll see on the screen that is noted as March 2024. That phase will cover fiscal '25 and '26. That also happens to be some of the fiscal years where we have the greatest lift of transformation in, in all of the pillars and policy areas. So that plan is due for fiscal '24, or sorry, fiscal '25 and '26 at the, and '27, actually. Yeah, '25, '26, and '27 will be due in March of 2024. And once we get through all of that, we will move on to the second submission, which will be fiscal '28 through '32. We don't know, obviously, a lot about that one yet because we're still in the very infancy part of the initial, initial first submission. But as we get more information, we'll be certainly talking to the executive Blueprint Committee, keeping the district all fully informed. And I think we'll be back here before long with another update of the Blueprint.
Yeah, I think it's important to note also, before we move to budget, that the Blueprint, when you, when you consider the jobs that everybody at the central office already has to do, okay? Take Blueprint away, a normal operating year, three years ago, four years ago, everybody has a job to do every day. Now all of a sudden, you've just thrown an incredible amount of work on the people who work at the central office. I know, the five of us know the amount of time and effort that even the chairman sitting up there, who's pillar of what, three?
Yes.
Knows that it's been an incredible amount of work, an incredible amount of work that has gone into all of this. So, yeah, that, that needs to be said. We were very, you know, a large school system probably has 30 or 40 people who aren't directors, that aren't people that do normal jobs every day. That's your job now, you do it. Well, in our system, everybody does what has to be done. So congratulations to all of you. That needs to be said. You've done a tremendous amount of work.
Okay, so we'll move on to the budget. Now, we are going to go a little deeper into some of these formulas than we have in the past because of the changes that Blueprint has required on educational aid. So for the FYE 2024 operating budget that we're talking about right now, we are talking about the unrestricted budget. We're not talking about any of the federal grants, any of the state grants, we're not talking about any health department grants that Mr. Stevens is aware of. We're really talking about the day-to-day operations of our school system and the formula-based revenues that we receive. So some of the things that are different this year is that we have several new calculations. And MSDE, with the help of the AIV, are calculating these numbers for the very first time. So we're a little delayed in receiving good numbers. We're also understanding and implementing weighted student funding, which we'll talk about in a little bit in a couple slides. And then we also have some significant changes to the local aid that we're receiving and the flexibility, the change in flexibility that we had previously before Blueprint, and now what that environment looks like as we're implementing Blueprint. So to start, we'll talk about weighted student funding. So this is a, a brand-new concept for Garrett County. And I feel like this graphic that I'm borrowing from the state superintendent is probably the cleanest way to explain what weighted student funding is. And so the way that we are receiving funded, funding from the state and locals now is that there's a base per pupil, which is called our foundation, and we, we receive that amount of dollars for kindergarten through 12th grade students. That's the first box. Then you move, move to the right and you see the weighted amounts. And based upon the demographics of the student population or the student enrollment, we'll receive, Garrett County will receive additional funding on top of the base. Sometimes it's a percentage of the base, sometimes it's hardcoded in statute what that amount is, but it is an additional amount to serve that student. Then there's the program amounts, and you continue to move across. Garrett County receives one of the program amounts. The other ones, unfortunately, we don't qualify for. But then you can see that the subgroups are listed out to the side. We have the poverty indicator of frame-reduced meals. That's for our compensatory education, we call it COMPED. Our students with IEPs is our special education funding. We have English language learners, those are students that English is not their first language. And we have the smallest population in the whole state in that suburb. Then we have the transitional supplemental instruction for struggling learners who are K through three, kindergarten through third grade. And then we have the CCR, which is students that are college and career-ready. So they have already, by that 10th grade year, attained the state definition of college and career readiness. So one thing we've got to start doing, stop doing, and start doing, we need to stop talking about an average per-pupil amount of dollars. There is no average student any longer in the state of Maryland. Students have a specific amount of revenue that must follow them to their school. 75% of those dollars received must be spent at the school in which that student attends. So the effects of these changes, of this change, is that we have to budget this way by per-pupil, per-school, per-program revenue. Then once we're in the school, or in this, the fiscal year or the school year, we, we have to monitor that to make sure that we're on track to spending those minimum dollars. And then we also must report them when the school year and the fiscal year are, are So on this slide, I'll just add that really the intent of the Blueprint is to ensure that more resources are dedicated to those who need it the most. And I said that earlier, but, but it really does look at, basically what it's saying is that certain students that are in specific student groups need additional resources to perform at the same level as students who are not in those groups. So let's take as an average student, for example. And really what that means is that we're moving away from equal funding, where you can say, on average, every student is worth a certain amount of money as far as revenue is concerned to the school system. We have to move away from that and more towards equity. So we're moving from equal funding to an equitable funding formula. And that, that's not something that any one of us is mandating, it's what Blueprint is expecting as we implement the, the funding formulas as detailed in Blueprint. And that does fall under pillar five, the governance pillar. So here, we're, we're providing a snapshot of what that, those per-pupil amounts look like. So within the state revenue formulas, we've, we've always had most of these program revenues. The big thing that's changed with Blueprint is that they've hardcoded the amount of the weights, but they've also required that the corresponding expenses be spent on allowable costs for that program. So for instance, the limited English money, we have to track it, budget it, monitor it, and then report that we spent those dollars on an English learner student. Previously, what we did with our, under this budget, this unrestricted dollars, is we put it all together and we, the superintendent created her priorities, the board weighed in with their priorities, and we were able to spend the dollars at the schools where, on what that, that we saw fit. Now we're required to spend these dollars on the programs at the schools for those students. We are also showcasing here the state and local split. One thing that, that, okay, sort of like Mythbusters, I guess, there are a lot of, I heard this, well, I heard that. So the amounts that are hardcoded in statute are these totals that you see all along the right side. It's important to understand that every one of those, the foundation, which is the base, and then all the way to the subgroups, are wealth equalized. So the state picks up a share, but all of our local aid that we receive from the county government must match in order to make these totals whole. So that's another, you know, previously, someone may have asked Mr. Weeks, how much money do you, is the county responsible to provide to Garrett County Public Schools? And he could have said, oh, it's about, you know, $8,000 per student. That's not the case any longer because the, the locals are truly matching these state programs with the dollars that we're receiving from the local government. So here is the big, you know, local wealth factor. And this is the part that is very difficult for, for myself to project. You know, Mr. Weeks has the, that information, and I have the student enrollment data, and together, we can come up with some pretty good projections. But, you know, the way that the state of Maryland has set up education funding is that the local wealth... is that the local wealth is relative to other jurisdictions across the state. And that a county's ability to generate income or revenues from property and income taxes should be, should make them have an equitable lens, if you will, for funding public education. So Garrett County, by this measure, is a very wealthy county relative to the other counties across the state. One of the biggest reasons is because of our property wealth. That accounts for about eighty percent of the weight. And you can see here that I provided for FY 2023 revenues, Garrett County was ranked fourth, the fourth wealthiest county in the state with a 5.9% increase year-over-year with this measurement. And then for fiscal 2024, we were ranked sixth. So we dropped two places in rank, which you'll see later on has helped the county a little bit. But the increase was still, was higher than the prior year, 6.7%. One of the things that Mr. Weeks and I have as a challenge when we're trying to create these projections is what's happening in the other counties also, and how our relative wealth is going to stack up with what's happening across the state.
Ms. Schweitzer, if I can jump in here just real quick. I think it's very important to note, because I think there's a lack of understanding on this, that the property wealth is based on the assessed value, not on the tax revenue. So regardless of the tax rate or anything else, because I've had citizens ask me, if you cut taxes, will that change the property tax wealth? And unfortunately, the answer to that is no. It's based off the assessed value regardless of what your tax rate is. So, and remember that assessed value is a state assessment. We don't control the assessments. The state agency does that as well. So there's not much we can do at the local level to offset that in any way. I think that's very important because I think the average citizen's a little confused by that.
Okay, so one of the big compliance changes under Blueprint is that with local aid, there's now a two-pronged test. And before, you know, by the 9:30 count, Mr. Weeks and I were comparing our data. And usually by the second or third week of October, we kind of had a guess of what the maintenance of effort amount was going to be for the following year. Now, there is the amount of revenue that the county must contribute to the Board of Education is greater of the local share, which is the match to all of those program revenues that we showed, or the maintenance of effort calculation. This year, we changed from maintenance of effort to local share. It was a change that we thought would happen in fiscal year 2025, but because of our overall enrollment decline, we didn't, it happened. We are a little bit sooner in that local share. So if you want to go to the next slide. So this is our overall revenue for our unrestricted budget based upon the calculations that we received late, late February. Normally, we receive these calculations January 20th, very soon after the government releases its budget. However, MSDE, the Budget Office, the Comp Control Office, they all had to recalculate several of the formulas. So we really didn't get good numbers until February 17th. We are looking at about a 2.16% increase overall. There is a little bit, our pie chart is shifting a little bit. The state of Maryland last year was funding at 44.9%, and now is at 46.6. So the state is picking up a larger share, and the county government has reduced to 53.1% from 54.7%. So this is a look, side-by-side, fiscal year '23 to '24, by the program revenues. Like I said, in this coming fiscal year, we are shifting from maintenance of effort to local share. And so what that really means is that 100% of the dollars that we receive from the local government must be used to match the program revenues as per the Blueprint statute. So last year, I have that highlighted line in there. And last year, we had nearly $2.7 million that the superintendent and the Board of Education had the autonomy and the flexibility to spend wherever they saw fit. And unfortunately, because we've moved to the local share, there isn't that flexibility or autonomy. And one of the other issues that we have with that is that you'll see that there's a transportation line that's empty for the county because there's no match for transportation. And the state funds that we receive do not cover our full expense of transportation as well as special education revenue. We do have a match for special education, but the total state and local dollars does not cover the full expense of that program. One item of note here is, when you look at this side-by-side, is that the large areas of increase for the county are in compensatory education of $1.1, $1.2 million, and then the pre-kindergarten line of $785,000. So the COMPEd is based upon the FARM data, the frame-reduced meals. And there was a change in which we went from taking the paper forms or the online forms to a direct certification process. And so across the state of Maryland, and you may have heard this in some of your Mako meetings, that COMPEd went through the, COMPEd numbers went through the roof for the entire state. Across most counties, their local share increased as well as the state's share increased. So the pre-kindergarten number, the reason that it increased was because we shifted from a proxy, where they estimated how many pre-K students were eligible, to actually completing the forms.
Do we get, what's the funding level for pre-K three? Is it full funding or is it a partial funding?
It's the full, full amount.
Pre-K three is full, okay.
But remember, pre-K students don't receive the foundation amount. So we just receive the weight amount for pre-kindergarten.
And regardless if it's pre-K three or pre-K?
Pre-K four, right now, we're only getting funding for income-eligible students at a tier-one level for pre-K four. And then, I believe it's next year, it will go to tier-two. I'll have to check the fiscal year on that, that we'll get funding for tier-two. But that's just for, for pre-K four. So it's up, the tier-one is up to 300% poverty to qualify, and tier-two is up to 600% poverty. So we do get funding for that. For pre-K three, you have to be income-eligible at a 300% poverty level. So we should be getting full funding on the pre-K program for pre-K three. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So in the four-year-olds, the kids that are over income, over 600% poverty, eventually we will, we're not going to get funding for those students.
Is it mandated that you have to have three-year-olds? I mean, could you just do away with three-year-olds going, or you cannot do?
According to the Blueprint, we are going to have to provide opportunities through a mixed delivery system of private and public pre-K programs for income-eligible three-year-olds. So any three-year-old that's income-eligible, which is up to 300% poverty, we will have to have a program for within our county by the end of the full implementation of Blueprint.
Seems to me like we're just, we need nursemaids out here instead of teachers because a three-year-old, I just, I just can't see.
So the idea for the pre-K three is to get early intervention because oftentimes, students who are living in high levels of poverty, they're not getting exposure to the vocabulary. They're not getting exposure to a lot of opportunities to make sure that they're kindergarten-ready. So it's really an early intervention. There's lots of studies that show that the earlier you intervene with a child all the way down to birth, the more ready they're going to be to learn. So that's the methodology behind it. I certainly respect your position on it, but that's the methodology.
I understand the methodology. That necessarily means that I have to agree.
Absolutely. I respect your opinion on it. But according to the law, we are going to have to have. But again, it's a private-public-mixed-delivery system to ensure that any student that's income-eligible, a three-year-old, at a three-year-old level, can have a program, a high-quality program.
I've been told by bus drivers, these kids can't even get on the school bus without somebody helping them, and the bus driver can't help them. And that pre-K three, right now, is only offered in two schools?
Right now, we have one in Accident that's serving northern-area families, and one in Broadford. And the plan for next year is to expand the one on the southern end to have two three-year-old programs at Broadford and just one still on the other end.
Do you see that in, in your meetings or in Ms. Ashby's meetings? And that conversation, is the ultimate goal to expand that to be in every school eventually? Or is that premature to state right now? Or is that, we don't know where that's going? Or does it look like the?
According to what we have modeled at the school system, we would put our pre-K three public programs, dependent on the board's decision, as, well, for the southern end, the decisions have made. The pre-K program for three-year-olds would be at Southern Elementary. And then on the northern end, there's a decision that still needs to be made. But the way it's modeled, the three-year-old programs would be at Northern Elementary, or, and we're using those names as proxies, but.
Sure, but I'm thinking, maybe I'm not asking the question the way I want. I'm thinking, when kindergarten started, it was optional, and now it's universal. Every school has to offer kindergarten. Pre-K was optional. Now they've made it universal. Eventually, you're going to have to have it in every school. Do we see pre-K three going the same route, or?
No, because it's a mixed delivery system. It's all income-based, and it's a mixed-delivery system. No, we are, quite frankly, going to struggle with getting a mixed-delivery system in Garrett County. We don't have a lot of daycares and private providers. Other counties are struggling as well with that. But the idea is that a good chunk, like 30% of the slots are supposed to be private providers. That's the first benchmark, and then it goes up from there. The challenge is going to be, do we have private providers that are going to meet the high-quality standards that are expected from the Blueprint to be eligible for that funding, to be considered a private provider under Blueprint? There's a number of rules and expectations that they have to comply with to be eligible.
And I just ask for planning purposes in room and building.
Yeah, I think for the answer to your question is no.
Well, and we're going to be saturated in terms of the families that want to participate. And again, we have, we offer a universal pre-K. So any student, regardless of income eligibility, will have a spot in Garrett County Public Schools for four-year-old pre-K. So here, we have a snapshot of FY 24 revenue by the programs in their totality. So you can see where your, our local government match comes up into the state. You can also see the transportation, the 3.9 million. There is no local match for that. And then we also do have a couple of other pieces of funding. So one item of note is that the program revenues that Garrett County Public Schools does not receive are the Guaranteed Tax Base Program, the Comparable Wage Index, and the Education Effort Adjustment. So some of them are hardcoded in statute that Garrett County equals zero. Some of them have to do with wealth, relative wealth. And then the Education Effort Adjustment has to do with the amount of local funding and a historical perspective mixed with a wealth equalizing. It's a really great piece of legislation to read if you ever want to do that. So one, one other item is that the Blueprint Transition Amount, the second line in that $1.2 million piece of funding, there is no county match for that. Yeah, we're going to talk about that possibility of maybe the county participating in a match for that program. But you also see at the local revenue, maintenance of effort autonomy, it's red, it's zero. So unfortunately, all the dollars currently are going to that teacher match. So, here's a deep dive into the Blueprint Transition Funding. Along the bottom are the amounts per statute of what Garrett County will receive, unless there's a change. But that piece of funding is designed to assist our school system in implementing Blueprint, kind of as a stopgap, as we have those growing pains and we're trying to figure out how we, how we do this here in Garrett County. So right now, for FY 23, we're receiving that $1,201,160. And then in FY 25, it starts to go down. So you see that by FY 30, we are looking at zero funding from the state in this, in this area. This is where we are going to request that we receive a hold harmless from the county. As you saw previously, the minimum required by Garrett County Government is about $232,000 less than the FY 23 amount. And we are respectfully requesting that we be able to maintain a hold harmless from FY 23 to 24. What this will allow us to do, you see that little, I'm sorry. So there's a little inset, weighted student funding analysis. staff has been working with weighted student funding for about two, two-and-a-half years, and what that looks like, what has happened in the past with Garrett County's spending. And we recognize that by the measurement of weighted student funding, the northern-area schools are over-allocated, and the southern-area schools are under-allocated. So it gets back to what Dr. Miller was saying about equal, equality, equity? No, equity, not equality. See, I can't, I can't keep it. So we have always been able to just, one for all 12 schools, or, you know, and unfortunately, you know, we can't do that anymore. We used to be able to say, one for northern, one for southern high, one for northern, northern middle, one for southern middle. Unfortunately, we have to look at the way we're spending our dollars, and everything may not be equal going forward. What this Blueprint Transition Funding will allow us to do is to right-size the shift of reallocating resources, maybe from northern schools to some southern schools in a smoother manner, rather than having to just rip the band-aid off of, and, you know, make it just a smoother transition. So this is a brand-new thing that I've never provided before. But Mr. Weeks and I are working together to try to provide some projections on what revenue looks like for Blueprint. The Department of Legislative Services, when Blueprint was on the cusp of being approved, came out with a huge fiscal note that had all sorts of assumptions that were not quite what Garrett County is about. So as we're working together, again, like what I said, I have a lot of the enrollment projections. projection information and Mr. Weeks has some of the wealth equalizing, the relative wealth information. So the assumptions that this projection was built upon is that the enrollment decline continues as was agreed upon with the Maryland Department of Planning. It also assumes that all the subgroup percentages be, remain, maintain the same as a percentage of the total student population. And I also made an assumption for this purpose that our relative wealth would remain consistent. So we would remain in that, that same area with the state. Now, what we're, a possibility could be is that by FY33, the county could be looking at about $10 million additional required funding for the school system. The state would be looking at about 6.6 million increase. And again, the total increase is based upon our enrollment projections. And then the split between what, how much the locals pick up or how much the state picks up is based upon the relative wealth remaining consistent. So, are there any questions about the actual projection? Because, you know...
But a comment, just so if I understand this, from fiscal '23 to fiscal '33, a 10-year span, we're picking up $18 million in costs.
Ten, 10 million. You had to look at the county government.
Total, I'm talking total down.
Oh, yes, yes.
Yeah.
Thirty percent.
Yes.
The, the concern that we have as, as staff is that as we're also projecting the expenses, with the pillar-two requirements for staff, we're looking at compensation package of a, of a teacher increasing by about 64%. So, and when I talk about a compensation package, I'm talking about their salary, their health insurance, their pension, all in. We're looking at about 64% increase in that same time span. So we are going to, I know it seems like a lot of money, but we will be, we will be squeezed, so.
I'll make two comments on that because it, it doesn't seem like it's a lot of money. It is a lot of money.
It is a lot of money.
And my estimates are about 12 million. And just so people understand this, the increase between '23 and '33 is about 1 million to 1.2 million a year, year over year, to about 10 to 12 million in 10 years. So the comments that were made previously of find more money, we're going to have to find more money no matter what happens because the state's mandating we spend that amount of money. There's no negotiation there. We all know that. State says you're paying this. We know what that number is. It's $10 million. That's not counting any capital money, which we're going to get to, I assume, later. But I'll also say, in defense of the school board, the state's also saying, well, you have to pay a teacher. So there's no negotiation there either. So you just can't say, we're not doing that. I mean, we can get upset or whatever about how much teachers are going to make or not make or anything else, but the state's very scripted. So they're saying, you got to pay this amount of money. And then they're saying, so there's no, to your point, you are going to be squeezed because that's what a teacher costs. That's just what it is. And at the same time, our costs are going up on top of that, or in addition to that because they're saying you have to spend X amount of money. But I don't think people understand what that looks like over a decade time and how much, the school board does not have much room to maneuver in that because it is all salary-driven. At the same time, we don't have any room in that because we're told this is what you have to pay, at a minimum. Certainly, you can pay more than that. But I think to Commissioner Titchell's point, it will be a struggle for us to find $10 million, $12 million in the next 10 years on top of the other capital thing. So it, it's all a matter of perspective in there that I'm not so sure everybody grasped the magnitude.
And, and just to interject, two, two thoughts too. The reason we're using FY33 is that's where the blueprint runs out.
Correct.
And it was, that that was the reason that that number was used. And, and also, when we make the calculations of the 64% for teachers, we're assuming negotiations are going to go that direction to that number. Remember, we must negotiate every year with our employees. We really don't know what we're going to end up having to pay them. That it's a huge number, and then the $60,000 mandate as a starting salary in, what FY26, I think it is, as a starting salary.
And you got to increase in minimum wage. It doesn't impact the school system immensely, but it does impact, and there are minimum wage employees.
Talking a couple hundred thousand dollars difference, just the number of ways.
Right.
Perfect story.
Perfect for somebody, not for us.
The board does...
You got to understand, a lot of counties are, particularly the small districts.
You guys do set the salary ladder after the 60,000 minimum, correct?
Oh, yeah.
And do you have, you have decided on that or not yet?
Are you referencing the career ladder?
Yeah.
So the career ladder has to be negotiated.
The amount, okay.
It has to be negotiated. Now, there are some hardcoded expectations.
You negotiate that yearly or just at the beginning?
Yearly.
Yeah, when you, when you look, Mr. Sam, when you look at, at the different things that teachers will be able to add, the national board certification, how like renew that every four years for, for numbers that's already hardcoded, I assume. You know, $8,000 more this time, seven the next time, six the next time. I mean, you're, you're talking to teachers that could be making incredible amounts of money. And we have, what, 52 teachers now in the pipeline, as we were told, to be nationally certified? Which means we're going to have to pay them that national certification and allow them to, every four years, get more on top of that because it's, it's the law. And I, I can't, I can't stress enough the, the pressure it's going to put on this system, you all and us, to pay for what the state says you must pay for. Such incredible amount.
What reduces the flexibility.
Yeah, we have no flexibility. I mean, we know...
And that, that's a big part of the problem.
Yeah, every dollar is fully obligated.
We don't know what's going to happen at the state level. I mean, the, the pressure put on them because of the number of counties that are affected by this. To do something about this, increase the state share would be one help, I think, now that would help you with the $10 million increase. But, you know, that's, that's what we're trying to work on. You're not, you know, I don't know, you know how hard it was to get the capital fund up there? You know, and so this is going to be even harder, I think.
At my Mako meeting, everyone was complaining about, even Montgomery County. I mean, everyone was complaining about it. The consensus at Mako is, don't expect a whole lot of help from, a whole lot of deviation from what's already put out.
Maybe tweaks, but that's not...
Yeah, that's what it is.
And I think that the worst part about it is that they did put an end date on the bill. If they would have just made this a permanent change, there would probably be more wiggle room to change the law. But because they put a finite ending, I think a lot of the appetite is just let it run its course and see what happens.
Or, like, Governor was already putting in, like, $900 million to fund 2027 or something like that.
Because their, their numbers are off.
Yeah.
Their estimates are off. And the problem with that is, when they wrote the bill, it was at $2017 dollar amounts. And obviously, we're not at 2017 expenses. And they haven't been able to reconcile that quite yet. And, and that's a big part of the issue.
So I think that's enough doom and gloom for one session. And so we're going to provide a brief update on our facility use work that we've been doing with our staff, the board, our community stakeholders. So in the southern area, the board bed has adopted pre-K through six and seven through 12 model. You all are aware, and thank you very much for your participation in our renovation of the southern middle school facility to become our Broadford or southern elementary, early learning to sixth grade center. With that, Broadford Elementary will be eliminated. Plan now is to demolish it and use that space for that, that campus. So we will be reducing our footprint by one. Superintendent Baker did implement stand-up school closure advisory committees for Route 40 and Swan Meadow. Those committees have made their presentations. And Superintendent Baker will be making her recommendation to the board at the April board meeting on Tuesday. There's also been a northern area grade band alignment committees that have been stood up, as well as several public stakeholder engagement meetings that we've held to discuss what the options to move to a pre-K to six, seven through 12 model would, might look like in the northern end. There are three options on the table. The, the options include the closure of option A, one facility, option B is two facilities, and then option C is three facilities. So the plan now is to have a recommendation to the elected board in the May board meeting with hopefully a board adoption of some, or, or not adoption of the, the northern grade band decision in June. All of the resources for the strategic planning of the facility use work can be found on our website. We dedicated a landing page to that, so if anybody's interested in that, please go to our site. Here's our capital budget section. This is different from the blueprint requirements that we've been talking about. The capital budget really is about those one-time, long-range expenses, buildings, equipment, fixed assets. So Garrett County Public Schools works diligently to maximize all the state dollars and federal dollars that we can through matches in various ways. A lot of times, the county commissioners have, have worked with us to, to match, as well as we've used our operating budget and fund balance in the past to be able to utilize those dollars. Couple of years ago, Senator, former Senator Edwards and Delegate Vitale were able to successfully tweak the statute and allow Garrett County to piggyback off of our adjacent county when it comes to the state-local split on school construction. And that has really opened up a lot of other programs through the IAC or the Inter-Agency School Construction Agent Department that Garrett County is able to utilize different programs to, to take care of some of our system, systemics. So here I have an overview of what the board and county commissioners have already agreed to fund for the next four years. This was our, on our capital improvement plan in October that the board adopted. And this plan helps Garrett County Public Schools achieve a right-sized footprint on the south, as well as the air conditioning installation that we were looking at. So, so it really is very, very helpful in achieving more efficient use of our facilities. Just want to make you aware that the FY25 capital improvement plan will begin to work once the board has made some of their decisions on the facility use work. And then we will continue to work with you all on what that looks like for the northern end. So, Mr. Mull, we are requesting for our operating, operating budget that the board of county commissioners maintain a hold harmless in our operating revenue of the $28,817,97 or an additional $232,674, more than the legal minimum. We would treat this funding as a, as a match to the blueprint transition money that would help us smooth the changes that we'll experience at some of our schools. And in, in terms of the 2024 capital budget, at this time, we have no further requests. But again, the budget development will begin in August. Are there any other questions that the commissioners have?
Questions?
Sure, I'll send you some on the way home, but...
I'm sorry, it was a lie.
I, I don't really have questions. I will say this. I have no idea how you guys figure all this out. They're, they're laying, Tom's already said it, they're laying a tremendous amount of work on you all. As far as the board, you all have, as you've heard from some of the mayors and so forth, you know, closing schools are a very, very difficult thing to do. But on the other hand, when you look at these budgets and everything, there, there is just so much that this county can afford. I mean, we just can't keep raising taxes and expect senior citizens that are on fixed budgets to be able to pay them. They're going to lose their homes. They're going to lose whatever. And granted, the assessments have, has went up significantly with, with the reassessment. I haven't heard from Scott yet what that might be. But, you know, we've got to look to the future as you are looking to the future. And I appreciate that very much. I really, really do. We've said many times in the past that you got to look to the future. You just can't live in the present all the time. You got to look. Because we, we can't budget year to year. We got to know what we're going to be facing so we know what, what we need to do. We're being hit very hard to lower the tax rate. Whether we do that or not, I don't know. Simply because of, you heard from the sheriff's department, you heard, you know, we've still got other departments to hear from. I'm sure they're going to request more money from us. So not just this year, it's the following year. I don't want to lower taxes this year and then next year come back and say, well, we got to raise it, you know, twice as much or something. So we, we need to look at that to the future. And so personally, I appreciate all the work you all put into this. I appreciate all that you guys have faced. I know, I know there's, there's a lot of emotion out there. And there'll probably be a lot of hard feelings out there, but you have to do what's right. And, and I'm not telling you what to do. I'm not, I'm not asking you to close a school or keep a school open. I'm not asking you to do that. I'm asking you to look at the, at the overall picture and, and do what's right for Garrett County. And that's all you can do. That's all you can do. That's what we try to do. And I'll shut up now. I'll probably send more to these. Thank, just thank you all. We appreciate it.
You good? I, I'll just conclude with saying, Coach Woods, I heard you at Route 40 and then reiterated it at Swan Meadow, thanking the folks who gave their testimony for their reasonableness that you don't necessarily see all the time anymore. And I'll double down on that and thank you guys. The relationship between boards of education and commissioners in Maryland are unique relationships. And they're not always the most cordial relationships because from our side of the table, oftentimes, it's easy for boards of education to just wash their hands of things and say, if the commissioner just give us more money, we could do whatever you, you want to do and pass the buck. And I will say, and Ryan's new, Larry's been here for a long time, working with this board, that's never been the case. We've always been collaborative and tried to work together whenever we can. You guys, I don't envy your position, what you're, you're faced with. But where we've been able to help financially, we, we've... to help financially, we've made commitments to do that and those commitments are solid. So I just appreciate the, for lack of a better word, camaraderie, but the mutual respect, I think, because that is not necessarily always found all the time throughout the state. And talking with my colleagues through Mako now, they're having some real tough decisions and real tough conversations around the state on how they're going to deal with this blueprint funding and what that looks like. Montgomery County, you guys probably know, just approved the 10% tax increase just to pay for blueprint. That's, that's pretty substantial. And I think other counties are going to struggle with other questions with it. But I just want to thank you all for that. And, you know, we, I think, I speak for all of us when I say we pledge to support you guys the best way that we can. And if, if we have disagreements, at least we can sit down and talk about it and then, you know, approach it that way. So we do appreciate it.
Certainly, anybody, Jason, anybody else?
No, just, you know, same comments back. Mr. Edwards, as far as, just letting you all know, we really appreciate the open communication that you crews have and it's been helpful since we've been through the process.
I think it's, everybody out there will tell us, you know, don't put a dollar sign on their child, but I don't think we have much of a choice to put a dollar sign on their child. I mean, the state, the state legislations mandate, there's some, you know, tough decisions are going to have to be made. And I appreciate the communication.
Thank you. Well, and on behalf of all of us, and of course Superintendent can't be here today, but again, thank you for, thank you for, you gave us $14.3 million, you know, for selling it. I mean, that was a huge step. We could not have done any of that without your cooperation. So thank you for that. And, you know, you're right, we have some very tough decisions to decide what's the best route for Garrett County to go considering, you know, considering all we're up against. But I do again want to thank Allison and Scott, you know, giving us a projection too. I mean, when I, when I first got that, I looked at that, man, my heart sank, my stomach. I, you know, when you look at those projections and you look at what our teachers will, we will have to pay our teachers in 10 years, I said to my wife, I may get back into teaching. Yeah, I'm 73 years old. It looks pretty good. But it's the law, you know, it's the law. So, you know, we'll do what we have to do. But thank you. And certainly thank Jane's back there too, all of you. I mean, they, we could have reopened the Luke Paper mill with all the paper they've given us over the last six months. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thanks.
All right. Anything else? Okay, thank you all very much. Thanks for coming. Thanks for tuning in. See you in a couple weeks.